Ladies first.
No, no, no.
Now, we're increasing the town council to the audit.
Doesn't matter who.
The board has enough in it for their budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be nicer than now.
That is the only D V I should get it from.
Yeah.
I didn't say. She said he would put it in, huh?
What are you gonna say, you're gonna keep going down there until Joe gets here?
Good, yeah?
Not bad. Have trouble Friday?
Well, thank you.
This Friday.
Yeah, just waiting. Good evening, and welcome to the special meeting of Monday, May fourteenth. May I have Counselor Lesser lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you do it last night?
I did.
Oh, see, I didn't have the minutes to check. Sorry. All right, we're gonna move into council action. If we could hold off on item A, adoption of the town of Weathersfield budget, we'll wait for Counselor Latina.
Do we take attendance, or?
Oh, that would be good, huh? I'm trying to move things along. Go ahead, Dolores, please.
Counselor Breton.
Here.
Counselor Forrest.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Latina will be late. Counselor Lesser.
Here.
Counselor Ralph.
Here.
Counselor Spinella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martine.
Here.
Mayor Morin Bell.
Here, thank you. Okay, now if we could move into council action, if we can move to item one B, the approval of the purchase of body cameras for the Weathersfield Police Department. Do we have a motion for that?
Yes, a motion to authorize acceptance of the Office of Policy and Management Body worn recording equipment grant for the purchase of body cameras for the Weathersfield Police Department and allowing asset forfeiture funds for the initial purchase.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A minute, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. The chief has asked that we approve the purchase and acquisition of the grant funds. The grant funds are gonna change substantially after July, so he felt it was important to move these forward. This is the purchase of thirty body cameras and associated software and hardware. There's sufficient funds in the asset forfeiture account to cover the purchase.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, I don't see anybody here to talk on them, 'cause he had a lot of questions last time about how they worked and how he was gonna use them and all that.
I think those have been resolved for him.
Okay.
He was, yeah, I expected him to be here too. We can move on.
Privacy issues and all that.
We can hold for a few minutes.
Okay.
You have a question for Mike?
Well, if we hold, I can, you know, go with my questions whenever it's appropriate in the future, if he does come in, or if somebody from the police department comes in.
Move to table four, to the call of the chair, one B.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? Okay, we will put that on the table, awaiting the arrival of the police chief. About item one C, authorization to submit a local transportation capital improvement program grant.
Make a motion to authorize the submission of a two thousand and eighteen local transportation capital improvement program grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Good evening, Derek.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I can stand here. Okay, thanks. Okay, apologize for the delay. Let me just pull up a couple of plans here so I can show you as I explain what we're looking to do. Yeah. Oh, all right. Okay, I'll get started. Here tonight, Madam Mayor and members of the council, to talk about seeking an application for lots of funding through the state. Loads of funding is local transportation capital improvement program funds. It's state funds, it's administered by CROG. This year, they put out a solicitation, usually it's every few years. This year, road solicitation totaling twenty-five point five million. Each COG, and we were with CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments, puts out solicitations from municipalities to be able to apply for funds. For this particular phase, it's for road construction, which includes road reconstruction money and also road rehabilitation money. They have different pools, so we are seeking to put in two applications, one that would go into each pool of money. I'll go through both of them. The minimum cost for each project is three hundred thousand dollars. The maximum award to a municipality is three million. We're allowed two applications. The way this program fund works, it's a hundred percent funded through construction by the program. The town is responsible for just design costs with this. So, what you don't see in front of you, and I think you might have in your packets, is Walker Hill Road was gonna be our first application. Walker Hill Road, that would extend from Jordan Lane. Were you hooked up before?
Is he just pulling this up? We all have this.
We all have this.
Yeah, we all have this.
Yeah, well, we can work with that. That's not what I was gonna show you, but I could talk you through it. You guys can work on that. So, apologize for the technical difficulties, that's how my Monday's been going. So, we're looking at one project, which is a full road reconstruction from along Walker Hill Road from Jordan Lane to the Hartford Town Line, really to the first intersection in Hartford, which is Victoria Road. You know, this stretch of road sees a lot of traffic, it's a regional benefit. There are two state facilities, Department of Labor, Department of Corrections, that are on this road, as well as it's kind of a gateway to and from Weathersfield as you transition to Franklin Ave and Hartford. Basically, with this type of project, it's really too expensive for us to do as part of our annual paving program. The scope is too complex and the costs are too high, which is why it would be a good candidate for these types of funds if we can secure them as a means of getting the road reconstructed. Some of the existing issues that we have out there that we're looking to address with this application would be, you know, obviously if you've been on that road, it's been very poor road conditions. Most of that's related to the fact that underneath the pavement, there is an eight-inch thick concrete base beneath the road, and that over time has cracked at different locations at the joints, and those are reflecting through to the pavement. So where we have the concrete base joints, we have very significant potholes forming and defects in the road. Town is out there a lot trying to patch them and do small repairs over the years, but this has been an ongoing problem for quite some time. If you've driven down it, there's very wide travel lanes, they range from fifteen feet to thirty feet wide, which leads to increased speeds out there and also just drive for confusion, not being sure where they're supposed to be driving when there's vehicles parked or buses out there. There are eight bus stops in this route, so CT Transit, both going northbound and southbound along Walker Hill, do have a lot of facilities that they are stopping at, as well as a couple of bus stops. There's one southbound just north of Jordan Lane where the bus stops and it takes up one of the two lanes there, causes problems when a bus is there, and also for the northbound direction when they stop in front of the Department of Labor. These are stops, I've spoken to CT Transit, where they have extended wait times, the buses do sit there for a period of time, and they block one of the lanes there too. So it leads to a lot of traffic congestion, it's just not a safe condition that we have out there. Also, just regards to pedestrians, we don't have, we do have crosswalks crossing Walker Hill Road, but we don't have any sidewalk ramps there, any ramps at all, so it's not ADA compatible, so those people waiting on the sidewalk for the bus, this time of year they walk across the grass shelf and get on the bus, but when there's snow and it's piled up, these areas aren't necessarily clean, so they're forced to walk to the next intersection and get on the bus there. So there's some safety issues we can address. What we're looking to do with the plan, which you see the limits on the plan that you have in front of you, I'll just go through some of the improvements. One is, what we need to do there because of the fact we've got about a two to four-inch pavement section over eight-inch concrete base that is failing, so we're gonna take everything out, it's a full excavation, take out the base, put back processed aggregate base material that we normally would have on roads, and a pavement thickness over that. We're looking at this more of a complete streets project, so because we have a lot of width out there and it's underutilized, because I said we have excessive lane width, we can bring in some complete street features like bike lanes, bus stop lanes, bus turnoffs. Some of those things are available out there. I have talked to CT Transit about which stops that would make the most sense at, and they've given us some recommendations and feedback on our plan thus far. In general, we're keeping the island that's out there, it's grassed island with trees, so we wanna maintain that. As you may have seen, the plows, you know, trying to plow around those are hitting up the curb, the bituminous curb breaks, so because of the fact that Franklin Ave has granite curb, I think it would make sense to try and carry the granite curb down through the project, that is covered as part of the program, they will pay for that. So looking to kind of extend that granite curb look down through this area would help both in aesthetics and also in just durability of plowing operations, just to keep the islands and the exterior edges of the road just cleaner and neater than they have been in the past. So in doing that, we'll be able to maintain pretty much the existing road width. Northbound, we would have two eleven-foot travel lanes, so instead of the fifteen-foot lanes we have now, we'd reduce them down to eleven, which is standard and recommended for traffic calming measures. In doing that, we could leave an eight-and-a-half-foot shoulder on the right side of the road that could be used for buses to stop, and also double as a bike lane, so at least the buses can get off the roadway and maintain still the two through lanes going northbound and not be in the way. Going southbound, we would maintain, similar to what we have, one eleven-foot wide travel lane with a designated bike lane in the southbound direction, five feet wide, and then a parallel parking lane for the residents there, that from time to time do park in the road. Part of the project, CT Transit, you know, recommend that we include putting in concrete pads at the bus stops. They are talking with the state facilities, there might be some opportunity to reduce some of them, like I said, we have eight. They said there are opportunities that they can either eliminate or combine stops, or relocate them closer. One thing we were talking about and is included in the plan we've proposed, is where we put the new bus shelter in. Last year, Greater Hartford Transit District installed the bus shelter. We'd have a full bus turnoff there where they can pull out of the lane that's for the bikes and completely out of the road, and we could stack two buses there, 'cause they will have two stops, maybe three utilizing that location. So, it could be an improvement where we have the granite curb kind of bump outlet, the buses pull off the road, a little bit of sidewalk improvements with the granite curb going along the front, that new shelter that was put in. As part of this, I mentioned pedestrian, we put in new sidewalk ramps where we have crossings now, we're going to put in ramps so they're ADA compatible. One of the issues out there now is the three crossings that we have at the side streets are very long, they're about eighty feet, being that you're crossing two lanes of traffic and one lane in the other way, it's a long stretch, there's really no refuge, 'cause they are outside the islands. So as part of this, we were thinking about, from a maintenance perspective, we didn't wanna put the pedestrian crossing through the island, because then it's just more maintenance on town step, but what we can do is at the nose of the islands where we have the crosswalks, is put some like flush brick pavers, something to differentiate it, it's not road, but it's something that's plowable and easy to maintain, and at least that way halfway through the road, pedestrian gets a break before they go through the next half of the road and they're not standing in the middle of the intersection like they are now waiting to cross. In talking with CT Transit, they do have people that do use the bus, coming to the facility that do cross the road, and suggested, you know, that would be a good improvement to include. We have spoken to the city of Hartford. Because the Town Line's about a hundred and fifty feet short of the intersection with Victoria Road, we felt it would make sense just to carry the project to the intersection. CROG is a regional authority, so they look at regional projects, and the fact that it crosses the Town Line, they were amenable to, it doesn't have to just stay in Weathersfield, I think it'd give us a better product. I have spoken with the city of Hartford, they're agreeable to that, they offered some comments on some thoughts that they'd like to see in their short section of the project, but at least that way it would bring it fully from the physical intersection at Jordan Lane up to the physical intersection at Victoria Road. We would not be going into the intersection, just bringing it up to where the radiuses flare out. So that was Walker Hill Road. The other project, I think I had written up in there, the estimated cost for that, once you, CROG makes us factor in contingencies and incidental work, is about two point four million, so we have about half a million, six hundred thousand dollars left that we could put in another project. So as I stated, there was money set aside for reconstruction like Walker Hill Road, there's also money set aside for resurfacing projects, which are more like our traditional mill and pave type projects, as long as it's an arterial or collective roadway. So what we're proposing is to put in Highland Street from the Rocky Hill Town Line up to Thornbush Road, would cost about that much, once you factor in all their contingencies that they make us put in. So that would be a straight mill and overlay, two-inch mill and overlay like we normally do. This is a road that sees a lot of traffic, it is something that we expected we were going to have to be doing as part of our paving program in future years, so if we could, you know, obviously get state funds for this, there would be no design cost for this, because it's pretty straightforward, it's something of a limited scope that we can do that work in-house, so really there'd be no out-of-pocket for the town at all on that project, just be able to do it if it were selected. Right now, the road's about forty feet wide and there's two lanes, so we've got about twenty-foot wide lanes. I think it would benefit our application if we propose some white line striping to go down there to narrow up the road lanes, just for keeping traffic together and slowing traffic, and also provide some space for, you know, bicycle use too, even though it's not designated bike area, anytime you can do that, they're always amenable to that, so I think that would help our application a little bit. As far as, I'm sure you're thinking about curbing, they do allow some curb replacement as part of the mill and overlay rehabilitation work, not full, similar to what we do even on a regional basis, they expect there'll be some, not full, so we would do similar like what we do with our other programs, we place all catch base and tops, and we would, you know, I would assume we'd place probably about fifty percent, that's generally what we do, as needed, along the roads, and that would be covered as part of the program. So generally with these two, we're looking for a type of facilities that see a lot of traffic that might benefit, in the case of Walker Hill Road, Hartford residents, because it's right on the line, in the case of Highland Street, Rocky Hill residents, gets right on the line, so that gives us additional points as far as our application. Right now, they're soliciting, applications are due to CROG next week. They review it, once they make a decision, it goes to DOT, DOT makes final decisions, they said probably sometime in the fall they'd be making their recommendations on what projects might see funding out of this. And, you know, just given the state of finances right now, they've, you know, forewarned us that money is not gonna be readily available, they're telling us it'd be twenty-twenty at the earliest for any of these projects, which, you know, for a job, if we had gotten something like Walker Hill Road, we need a little bit of time to design and get it all out to bed and everything else anyway, so, you know, we're looking at twenty-twenty or later for these funds if we were selected. There is no obligation from the town at this point financially to put in the applications, you know, if at such time we are awarded either one of these, and if it's Walker Hill Road and there may be some design costs, you know, there's different ways we can talk about trying to address that and come up with those funds when the time arises, if that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor?
Derek, on a Walker Hill project, I think on the other side of Walker Hill, Jordan Lane heading down, where the islands are, I think there's, is there sprinklers in there for the plantings in there?
I had heard there were, yes.
When we do this part, will we be looking at sprinkling this at the same time, because we're cutting through the road?
We could. Those islands that I think you're referring to, just south of the Route 515 overpass, are landscaped islands, I think they have a lot of flowers and landscaping. We're thinking with these, on the north side, there would still be grass islands that we mow, but not having necessarily plantings or landscaping in, so really, you know, those details we certainly work out when we get to design level talks, but at this point, the thought was just to leave them grass, we'd mow them, we'd maintain the trees that are there, but not get too heavily on the landscape, so whether or not we need that, I guess would be a discussion we could have when we get to that point.
Any other questions? Counselor Hurley?
What did Hartford ask for? You said they asked for stuff on their part of the road?
They had suggested we looked at doing, as we come up to Victoria Road, replacing the two sidewalk ramps on the south side of the intersection that would have joined our project. They just asked that if we could include doing just the ramps on the north side, so that way we have complete ADA access control through the intersection. Really, it was the only concern they had.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. And the bike lanes on our two would also tie in, they have bike lanes in Hartford, if you go north of Victoria Road, they have designated bike lanes, so these would just basically be tying into that, which I think will help benefit our application to carry those further south.
Counselor Ralph?
Thank you, Derek. Roughly, how long of a stretch is this? I may have missed it in the beginning. This is for the Hartford line to Jordan?
It's about, I wanna say about twenty-six hundred feet.
Half a mile?
Yes.
And we're talking about a cost of up to two point four million dollars?
Yes. As I stated, the fact that they do make you be very conservative with the numbers, 'cause they typically, there is an allowance for a twenty percent increase on any project, but they, you know, they wanna be conservative so people aren't coming back, so they make us put in a lot of contingent. I don't think construction will realistically cost that much, just based how they want us to estimate it, that's what includes. Reason why, too, that's so expensive is a couple of reasons. One is the explanation, we gotta pull out all that concrete road base, that's the only way we're ever gonna get that road to be right again, otherwise it's gonna be, keep putting a Band-Aid on it, so there's a significant cost to take out all that concrete base. And to be honest, in the application, they'll state this, we've done pavement cores out there, so we've done about a dozen cores, and we know the limits roughly, but I think there are probably some ends at the top, north end and south end, and may not have it, but we'll get into that in further detail when we get into design. So this assumes full boxout for the whole length, I think that will be cut back a little bit when we get to real design, and then we're also having to bring back all that processed base. We can't reclaim because it's concrete, we would do that reclamation process with bituminous to make a base, but being concrete, I mean, there are, that is an option, I've seen, I've heard that that can be done, you know, it might be something we look at, but most likely right now for, from a being conservative perspective, we're saying we're taking it all out, putting the process back and putting all the pavement back. And then again, I mentioned going from bituminous to the granite curb is, you know, a significant expense. Granite curb is expensive to put in, we don't have a lot of it in town, but once it's there, it'll stay there a long time, and also very resistant to plow damage and such, so this might be an opportunity, because it just abuts Hartford, even though that's not our normal standard, they had said they would, you know, certainly, you know, consider that as part of the application without an issue.
Okay. Granite curbing, like you said, you know, not resistant to plows or anything like that, but they withhold up a little bit better than, so we would save in the long run of having to go out and recurb every spring?
Yeah, and that's different than a normal road, because of the fact they're coming in and out of these islands all the time for all the cut-through streets, so I think it'd be a more durable product, and, you know, something I think certainly a town probably wouldn't be trying to do on their own, but if we have the opportunity to have funding and it matches nicely with our budding neighbor that we're working into Hartford with, I think it would make sense. Hartford's, they do have granite curb, so their stretch of the road, they'd probably like to see that anyway, so I mean, carrying it down would be reasonable.
It did scare me at first, looking at that, you did an excellent job of kinda bringing me down a little bit and get to reality that it's not gonna cost twenty-four hundred, or twenty-four, two point four million dollars. But I got a little nervous there, thinking this is why the state of Connecticut is where we are right now, in the need of tolls and increased gas tax, because the cost of, you know, road construction or any type of infrastructure improvements is kind of getting out of control, but if there truly is eight inches of concrete and pavement, you know, throughout that entire half-mile stretch, then, yeah, we would have to go up to two point four million, but hopefully not, and we can come in a lot lower. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to take off the table, the body cameras for the Weathersfield PD?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Good evening, Chief.
I apologize, I didn't know you had a council meeting tonight, I thought it was next week.
No worries, glad you're here. If you could just go over the purchase of body cameras, and I think council members had some questions for you.
Very good. The body cams, it's something I've been very reluctant to do, because of the stipulations and the policy that came out from the state, from OPM. They made it so it was almost impossible to use them, it almost put the officer in a position where he's going to fail, because he has to turn it on and he has to shut it off in certain instances, and to be honest with you, if it really gets, if he's really in a bad situation, the last thing he's thinking about doing is turning on a camera. It's not like the dash cams in the car, when you flip on the lights, that automatically starts the recording of the cameras, so, and that's what they're used to. With the body camera, you don't have lights on you, so you have to physically turn it on, and there are certain instances, and some of those instances, I'm not sure of the reasoning behind it, where you have to turn it on and you have to shut it off. So that's why I was reluctant to do this, because of those policies. The state of Connecticut, OPM, Office of Policy and Management, is offering a hundred percent reimbursement grant on the body cams. No one was taking them. The state police had to, because that was the law that the legislature passed, is that they had to get the body cams. They were supposed to be in place by July first, two thousand and sixteen, and they're still not in place. I don't think it had anything to do with the policy, but what it had to do was the fact that they were trying to implement a thousand body cams, and it wasn't an easy task. I was at a training session last week with eighty-three other chiefs from the state of Connecticut, and I was listening to them, and they all are going for this grant, and my question to them was, well, how are you gonna get around that policy? They seem to think that it's feasible, that we can work with that policy. It's not gonna be easy, and I think we are putting officers at somewhat of a disadvantage, but to save what turns out to be close to a hundred thousand dollars in cost for these body cams, I guess it's kinda worth it. So that's why I decided to try to go forward with this and see if we can get this in by June thirtieth, 'cause that's the deadline for the grant.
Okay.
That's everything in a nutshell. If you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Sure, I think counselors did. Counselor Hurley?
Hi, Chief. I know you talked a little bit about your concerns.
Yes.
Now, what really alleviated, you had like a lot of privacy issues with?
Well, that's the thing, if, the way it's worded, it says that every sworn officer who has intercourse with the public has to have a camera and has to have it on. Well, there was, the way they're interpreting that, other chiefs are interpreting that, and the other chiefs that have gotten the cameras already, is that it's how many you have. So in other words, if I have enough to do the patrol division, then that would be, that's all I can issue to, I can't issue to detectives, the staff, or me, 'cause I don't have that many. So they don't dictate how many you have, but they do dictate that if you're gonna have contact and you have a body cam, then that's when you can have to turn it on and when you have to turn it off. You have to turn it off in certain instances, like if you're interviewing a sexual assault victim, that has to be off. If you're interviewing a juvenile, if you're having anything to do with any of the protected classes, then you have to turn it off, and that's where, and that's, and there's other instances where you have to turn it on. If you stop to help somebody, a motorist who's broken down on the side of the road, you have to turn it on. And that's what I'm saying, until, that's what makes me afraid, is that there's gonna be instances where an officer forgets to turn it on, then it looks like we're trying to cover something up, and it's not true, but that's the implication it has, so that it seems simpler just not to deal with the body cams at all. We have the dash cams, and they have, say- We have the dash cams, and they have saved us many times. We did test the body cams a couple of months ago, and the officer, there was only, we had one officer that wore it for a straight month. Two instances that really kind of solidified it with me, that they are very important. One instance was a situation where a woman came into the lobby and made a complaint. This officer took that complaint. She then later came back and made a complaint against the officer and outright lied. She just outright lied about what he did and what he said, and everything was recorded, so it was easy to solve that particular case. But without that body cam, what we would have had is almost a he-said, she-said scenario. And in this day and age, we have, we need more.
So it sounds like you still have concerns.
I have concerns, I truly do. But I'm also worried about the money. This is something that is going to probably have to happen eventually. If it isn't made a law, it's going to be, everybody else has them and we don't, that doesn't look good either. So that's why I decided to try to get this done in time for June 30th.
Other questions? Oh, excuse me. Councilor Ralph?
Thanks for coming, Chief. I did have a number of concerns as well, now that you're here in person talking about, you know, some of the concerns that you had had been alleviated, and the in-person scenario with the officer who demoed it for a month. Makes me feel a little bit better. We have a hard, fast deadline of June 30th for the grant?
Yes.
And where's the grant come from?
OPM.
OPM? State money?
Yes. They have, they have 10, I think it was either 10 or 12 million dollars that they set aside for the body cams, for the police in the state. The state police, it was $2 million. So there's 10 million left. Most of that money is still left, and has been all the way up until now, but now I think, because the deadline is coming up, that there's going to be a lot more departments applying for that grant. That's why I felt that we needed to do this.
Do we have any policies, or do you have any policies being drafted up, working with Jack Bradley or anybody?
I have to go with the model policy that came out of POST. We already have the dash cam policy, which is somewhat similar, but we'll have to institute the POST policy, the model policy that came from POST. I don't have really any choice in that.
Right.
And some of that, like I said, some of that policy is tough.
One of the, with the news stories of the past couple of years on this, and releasing footage to the press before, all that stuff, I mean, are we going to have any policies in place for that before June 30th? Oh, well, I guess the funding deadline is June 30th. When would they actually go in use?
It would be quite a while after that. I would have some time after getting them, to institute them, and those are the things that would have to work out. But there's, there's, there's a lot of that, the little nuances that we'd have to work through, no question about it. How they're dispersed, I mean, there's just a whole myriad of things that we have to get through before we actually start issuing them to officers. But once we have them, once we have the money in place, and that's, that's probably the... The other thing, too, I just heard today, I wasn't aware of this, is that I can't use asset forfeiture money to make the purchase and then get reimbursed. So it's going to have to come from the town. I don't know if you have an extra $100,000 laying around that you'll get back, but...
Promises, promises. Why can't you use asset forfeiture?
It's in the rules. See, I'm telling you, these rules are, it's a rule from OPM.
Because the information I got from Lieutenant Connolly said you're going to use asset forfeiture.
Yeah, well, we didn't know, and I just heard that today, and I got to verify that. But the way it sounded was that it is there.
When do you expect reimbursement?
I, that's the state. I'm not sure.
Twenty, twenty-five?
The check is in the mail, I don't know.
Well, that's, I don't know.
You got to do what you got to do.
Okay.
Figure it out.
Well, I would like, make sure that there are policies in place before, and I don't know if the council...
I can promise you there'd be policies in place before the first one is even issued.
Yeah.
There'd have to be. There's no question about it. And there's going to be a training session. I mean, there's going to be multiple training sessions, because there's some of the things that they have to do are going to be somewhat tough. And I know, I've been there. I've been on the street when so, all of a sudden, something happens right in front of you, and the last thing you're thinking about is hitting your chest. And I'm not even sure, the way the cameras are today, there's different types, we're going with the same company with the dash cams, but they do make two different kinds. One is a, it's a bulkier one that sits up high, and the problem with that is, and I've seen the videos, where if an officer all of a sudden has to draw his weapon and come up with it, guess what he's blocking?
Yeah. My, my bigger concern is the privacy of when something happens, it gets released to the media, that there's an officer-involved shooting or something like that, and, you know, folks and residents are up in arms about it. So the police department say, well, we got to release the video, because the releasing the video shows exactly what happened, and then, you know, the fear of all the others will subside after that is released. And in doing so, the releasing of the video strikes, or sets off another issue where privacy of others involved in it. And now we've got a situation where we're defending the police department for releasing it too soon to take care of the person who's...
Now you know why I was reluctant for a long time.
Right, well now I'm...
You're damned if you're doing it, damned if you don't. I absolutely understand. But they have come a long way, and this is part of that purchase, with this redaction software. And it makes it a lot easier to, because you could even have, let's say, a juvenile in the background. Well, you can take that juvenile out. The only problem I'm going to have is who's going to do this redaction and use that software to do it.
Any good trial lawyer would say, you know, you touched that video before my client got a chance to see it, and God knows what else you took out of that video.
Yeah, you're right. I don't know what else to tell you, but it's the redaction part of it is just like one of those things that blur out the face or something like that. It's not removing anything or taking anything away. It just blurs things. But there's a lot of other aspects of it, too. I mean, officers are going into people's houses on a regular basis. They're supposed to have it on in certain instances, and they're supposed to have it off in other instances. Why they pick domestic violence? You can't have it on in a domestic situation. I don't understand that one, because that's probably the most dangerous thing for an officer to go into.
Yeah.
But that's the rule.
Talk to the people in North Haven, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, nine.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have a work cut out for us. It's going to be tough. It's going to be tough on me, because I have to make those kind of decisions, and it's not going to be easy, and I'm going to have to discipline an officer if he makes a mistake. So I, that's why I've been very reluctant. But then I'm also practical in the sense that I don't think, if I came to you for close to $100,000 out of the budget, I don't think you'd be happy.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Lester?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. Two quick questions, and one you talked about a little bit. Is the plan just for the patrol officers to get it initially? Is first question. The second question, how do the officers feel about this? Is there kind of a mood of the department on this issue? Just curious of what some of the feedback has been. So two questions, the, just the patrol officers, and then kind of how officers might be feeling about this.
Yeah, I'm looking to do the patrol division, but I'm, I need extras, because the way the cameras work now, the battery lasts about 12 hours, which is fine for an eight-hour shift, which is what they mostly have, but there are times, many times, where they have to work a double shift. So if they have one, there's a lot of different things. If they have one assigned to them now, we got to have a spare to be able to give them to get through it. To answer the second part of your question, the officers are a little concerned, and I don't blame them. You've got something that's recording on a regular basis, sitting on your chest, that's kind of intimidating. But they got used to the dash cams in the car, and they understand it now, they know how it works and how it saves them in most instances. I mean, 99 times out of 100, it really saves them. We had a fatal police shooting with, without the camera, and then with the camera. Both of them, the officers were exonerated, they were justified, but let me tell you, the one with the camera went a lot smoother than the one without. So I know the value of the cams, the body cams. I mean, there's twofold in this, too. When you know you're being recorded, you have a tendency to act nicer, too. So it's, it's a good impetus for the officers to be nicer, which is exactly what I want, and it protects them against some people who have a tendency to not tell the truth. So if you try to balance this, it kind of leans towards that way, that the body cams are a good thing to have.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, what's the life expectancy of a camera, and what's your replacement plan?
I'm sorry?
What's the life expectancy of these cameras, and what's your replacement plan? How are you going to fund it moving forward?
Very, very good question. The life expectancy is probably close to like what the tasers are, and what we've gotten into with the tasers is replace four or five every year. It's in the budget, and that's what we ask for. That way, we never really get to the point where we're almost out and then have to turn around and ask you for a lot of money to replace them. The tasers have been a godsend since we got them, what, 10, 12 years ago? And they're not even being used as much as when we first got them, too, because I think the people that we deal with on a regular basis know the officers carrying a taser and they don't want to get tased, so they act nicer, and there's less injuries for the officers and less injuries for the suspects. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of good aspects to come out of that, and I think it was almost, we went two years without one deployment of a taser, but I don't want to go without them.
Sure.
And the same with the cameras. To answer your question, the cameras will probably along the same way. We have one-year warranty that's paid upfront. After that, we have, we would, we'll, we have the warranty, I believe that we have it in that proposal for like five years. So we should be okay for the first couple of years anyways, and then we should start trying to replace them and have them ready for the, when we knew we need to replace them. The cameras are pretty rugged. It's the peripherals, the cable that if the, if the, just the stuff that goes along with it.
Sure, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Forrest?
This one is to the town manager. With the motion as it's currently written, allowing asset forfeiture funds for the initial purchase, is there any changes that need to be made, or...
Yeah, we'll strip that from the motion if the chief has a new understanding of what's available.
And I don't know if you're comfortable doing this on the fly. If you are, then we, you know, I would certainly make the motion, but if not...
Figure it out.
Okay.
We'll set up the grant as a receivable. It'll be smooth as silk with them on.
I'll move to amend the motion and remove the language and allowing asset forfeiture funds for the initial purchase.
Okay, do we have a second to amend it?
Disallow. Disallow.
He said to remove.
Well, I'm removing, I'm removing the language and allowing, so it just is at the discretion of the manager at that. Unless you want me to put it at somebody else? That was kind of a joke, Jeff.
I get it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the main motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the amendment has passed. Do we have any more discussion before we vote on the motion? Councilor Latina?
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
So estimated budget for all of this moving forward after initial purchase is about $55,000 to $60,000. Am I reading that correctly?
No, it's much higher than that. Maybe I didn't understand the question. What was it again?
How much is this going to cost us to maintain?
Oh, maintain? Yeah, as we go forward, the camera, the body cameras that we're looking at cost about $1,200 apiece. So we would be looking for, not in the first few years, but after that, about, well, I figure $24, $4,800 to get four of them on a replacement schedule after about the third or fourth year, I'd say.
And then what about maintenance of software and things of that nature?
Yeah, the maintenance of the, of the software is going up to, if I remember correctly, was, we're paying $1,500 now a year for the software on the dash cams, and that will bring that cost of the, of the maintenance up to, I think it was, I want to say $3,500 or $4,000. It's more money because of that redaction software. But that, yeah, and that would be in the budget for next year.
And have you identified who would be kind of in charge of the program and how much that might cost?
I would have to put a lieutenant in charge of the program, but as far as who's going to be able, to have to do like the, the, you know, like the redaction software and stuff like that, have to prepare this stuff, it would be one of the officers that are assigned to headquarters, either out of support services or one of the staff sergeants that I have that do other things. Somebody's going to have to do it, and it has to be some of this, somebody I have now.
And what about the, just the sheer space of the data? Do we have something to house that?
Yeah, that's part of the, the deal, is the server that comes with it. It's, it's a much larger server, it's a bigger server, it's a new server, and it's going to, it's in part of that price.
Part of the initial $50,000, $60,000?
Yeah, it's more than that. It was, it was $80,885, if I'm not mistaken, but I might have to tweak that a little bit because that's why...
So at this point, these numbers are inaccurate?
Well, what I'm afraid of is that I need more of the cameras, and I might need to get more. And if the state is going to pay for it, I would rather work out those numbers now. If you could give me like a top line or something like that, like, don't, you know, you authorize up to...
Not to exceed?
Yeah, not to exceed. I would appreciate it, because it's $80,000 something dollars. If you could make it like $90,000, then I have some play there into getting, because I do want to get some of the peripherals, more of the peripherals, so the officers have a choice in how they carry the camera. I would like to get a couple of more cameras, because we need spares. Right now, what we have is, if I give everyone in the patrol division, I have on that schedule 30 cameras. There's 20, I want to say 29 in the patrol division. That only leaves us with one spare. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to work on these numbers until, because of the deadline, we had to get it before you. I would have much rather had a much better finished product, but we're going to need more cameras to have those spares.
As a, as a policy measure across the state, do you know how many communities do these body cams?
Right now, it's very low, except for the state police. I'd say out of, there's 103 police departments, 107 police departments, I'd say maybe 10. But what I heard at that training that I went to was, everybody's going for this deadline. A lot of people are, a lot of departments are.
But it's not a mandate at this point?
It's not a mandate.
Okay.
But if you can read the future, I have a feeling it's going to be eventually, and then we'd have to come up with the cost.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilor Ralph?
Just a couple of quick questions, maybe for the town manager. Do we have another council meeting this month?
Not in May, no. You're canceling the 21st. That puts us at June 2nd, or the first week of June.
I think it's June 4th.
June 4th.
We haven't canceled the 21st yet. We haven't canceled the twenty-first yet.
We have not.
It's on the agenda, it's on the agenda for this evening. It's the last agenda, I know.
I gotta, following up on Councilwoman Lettina's questions, hate to do this to you, Chief, but I got a couple, not more questions for you. But, I mean, we're now taking this out of town budget rather than asset forfeiture, which, you know, I didn't think about prior to tonight's dialogue on this. Um, some of the policy questions are still up in the air. I would like to, and I know you have a hard fast deadline of June thirtieth. We do have a meeting June fourth and then probably one June eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken. And we could do the twenty-first as well. I, I would put a motion out to table this until at least two weeks from now to get a little bit more information. I know you're grappling with some of the same concerns that we're grappling with. If it's feasible for you to give two more weeks, could that be done?
Well, the only thing I'm worried about is it's like a first come, first basis on this grant. And if that money gets eaten up, um, then we'll be out. And that's the only, that's one of the concerns I have. I have a lot of concerns about this, I truly do. But I think that we can work it out. I think we can work with the policy the way it is, we have to. And, um, we'll just go forward. I, I don't know how else to do it. The numbers, as long, if you can give me that top figure, I promise you we'll keep it within that. It's just that I need to figure out a couple of things with this thing. And I also want to make sure that the officers are comfortable with the, this transition. I don't foresee any, um, major objections to this, but you never know.
Do we have the funds in the bound, uh, budget for this? I mean, would we have to amend any of the budget tonight going forward?
No, no. We would set up the grant money as a receivable, so the budgetary impact is negligible.
Just a wash?
It's a wash.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we've made the amendment and we voted on that. We have the main motion on the, on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? The motion passes six-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item one D, renewal of auditor's contract, do I have a motion?
Uh, I'd like to move to designate Bloom, Shapiro and Company, P.C., to audit the books and accounts of the town, including the Board of Education, pursuant to the requirements of section seven nineteen of the Town Charter and to authorize the town manager to enter into agreement, Bloom, Shapiro and Company, P.C., for that purpose for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Town manager?
I'm gonna ask Finance Director O'Neill to walk you through this.
Could you say again?
As the auditee, um, we issued an RFP for Audit Services in April. Received responses from three firms. And just in the last couple of weeks of, you know, given the sort of compressed time schedule for, you know, to get an auditor in and the need to do interviews and things like that, have, you know, made the proposal. We asked Bloom to provide us with a quote for just a one-year extension of the five-year arrangement that just expired with them.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Um, item one E, cancellation of the May twenty-first Town Council meeting, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, I'm sorry. One opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. On to, um, item one A, the adoption of the Town of Weathersfield twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget. Town manager? You begin?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Uh, this evening you're scheduled to adopt the fiscal eighteen nineteen town budget, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Over the past couple of months, you have reviewed the manager's proposed budget and we've talked about various changes and amendments to that this evening. Uh, before you on the podium tonight are the necessary motions to adopt the budget based upon some adjustments made in the last couple of days. Uh, the adjustments are, there's an additional fifty thousand dollars removed from the town side, of which I can, uh, Finance Director O'Neill can give you the list of those adjustments. There is, um, a hundred and ninety thousand additional dollars removed from the Board of Ed budget and there is an additional three hundred thousand dollars placed into the road paving fund. Uh, those changes were made today. The outcome is a mil rate of forty point seventy-eight and a total spending increase of two point three eight? Two point six seven total increase, including the road fund. The motions this evening are various. The first set of motions, change or amend the proposed budget in terms of revenue items and expenditure items. A lot of the individual department amendments you look at are for health insurance. We are, we are adjusting the health insurance spend by about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and that touches various departments, so you see reductions in the various departments. Last week, we talked about a, some changes to the Board of Ed in the town to bring over to the town side the custodial supervisor position. Uh, that is unchanged from last week. That is included in this product here this evening. And then those amendments that we just made, that we just went over. So, um, we'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. O'Neill. And I are here to talk about those and we can go over the list of the fifty thousand dollar reductions on the town side.
Thank you. Do I have any questions on any of the, Counselor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, can you go over those fifty thousand dollars worth of cuts on the town side, please?
Sure, probably the, the easiest way to do that is, um, hopefully everyone has a nine-page handout with a series of spreadsheets. Pages eight and nine, the last two pages of that package, detail the expenditure adjustments from the town manager's budget. So if you turn to page eight and you just look at the, the headings, the first column of numbers to the left, I'm sorry, I got them in front of me, I should be doing this with my... So the first column here is the town manager's budget. And then there's a series of columns from, on the, on the overhead here, from E through M, which are various adjustments. Most of those you have seen, um, in your, in the various workshops and meetings that we've had over the last couple of weeks. I'll just run through them quickly. There's the, the pension adjustment, which, that has no impact, but it was just a, a reclass of some balances. You can see all the way at the bottom of page nine, the kind of the net impact at the bottom of each of these columns. So there's the pension adjustment, no change there to expenditures. Um, town manager mentioned the adjust, adjustment to the medical benefits of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That is, um, that's a ten thousand dollar increase from what you saw last week. The ten thousand dollar increase is part of the fifty thousand of adjustments. So that's the first item. Next column is disability insurance. Um, that's currently being negotiated with several insurance companies. Um, we're looking, just got news today that we can expect as much as sixteen thousand dollars of savings there. That number last week was ten thousand. So the six thousand dollar increase is another, uh, component of the fifty thousand. And then I'll just go a bit more quickly through the next few here, because these are ones that you have seen, an adjustment down on the line striping budget in the engineering department. Town manager mentioned moving the facilities position out of the Board of Ed and into, uh, physical services. That's a net increase of thirty thousand dol, thirty thousand eight hundred and six dollars. Uh, with the passage of the state budget last week, renters rebate is no longer, uh, responsibility of the town. So we take that out of social and youth services. That's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And then, uh, five thousand, uh, five hundred and thirty dollar increase to the town council budget for the audit fee, based on the quote on the, uh, one-year extension that, that was just, uh, just treated. In addition to that, um, we've been asked to present, uh, a hundred and ninety thousand dollar cut to the Board of Education budget. That's column L. And then finally is the, the rest of the town reductions. So that's the rest of the fifty thousand. You can see that that totals, uh, thirty-four thousand plus the ten and the six that we saw in the benefits. And I'll just, I'll just run down that column, uh, for you so you can see that. Um, there's three thousand dollar decrease to the town manager's budget. That's two thousand dollars taken out for the annual conference and a thousand dollars, um, in savings for the floater position, um, in that office. We would just delay filling that position for a month. Ten thousand dollar reduction to the physical services budget for savings from the streetlights project. Those are energy savings for the LED lights. Uh, six thousand dollars coming out of the MDC sewer line. There's a small piece in there, uh, we pay for the sewer charges for the housing authority. They have been doing renovations to their units and we're seeing a decrease in the water consumption as a result and a decrease in the, in the sewer charges. So they're just, uh, money that's available there, six thousand dollars. In the transfer line, uh, we would propose to reduce the transfers to the capital non-recurring expenditure fund for five thousand dollars and that's, uh, related to the survey tool that was requested by the town engineer. Um, I think the total of that was ten thousand?
It was thirty-eight thousand. And we'll see what's available at the end of the year to make up that difference.
Right. And the last item is a ten thousand dollar reduction in the reserve for retiree line for the, uh, that's for reimbursements to retired police officers. We have a contractual obligation to pay for out-of-pocket expenses. Those were really ramping up, uh, two and three years ago and we had, we had started to do the same with the budgeted amount. We added twenty thousand dollars in the proposed budget. But based on just the last two months of claims, we think that we can, we can take some of that out. So that's what we've done there. It looks like this year is gonna come in, uh, lower than we expected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to page up back to the motions?
Well, actually, I have a question on still some of the cuts. If we're looking at the renters rebate of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, excuse me, I just lost it, page eight of nine. Did we, had we ever paid our share of the renters rebate?
Not yet.
When did we budget the hundred and thirty-five thousand for our share of the renters rebate?
It's in this current year budget. And next year, when we put the budget together, we had the assumption and the information that we would have to do that again. Uh, the budget that passed the legislature provides in two thousand and nineteen that the state will again pay those bills. We are still expecting to have to pay some share of that in the current year.
So when the town voted for the budget last May?
Last November.
It was an adjustment in November?
Yes.
We did adjust for it, where we put money in because the town bu, or the state budget had us. But we never...
We haven't, we haven't spent that yet.
We haven't spent it yet.
We haven't gotten a bill yet.
And then we are cutting that out, that portion out because the state is going to be fully funding it.
For nineteen.
For nineteen. Would we get a bill for that money that has been expended since, I mean, it's not a full year, it's...
Our understanding is that the state was gonna shift half of the cost of renters rebate to the town in the current year, eighteen. We've yet to see that bill, but we are still expecting it to happen.
But not for the full?
Well, the full cost is two-seventy. We were told fifty percent of those costs would be borne by the towns through a reduction of state aid somewhere. So rather than make it a reduction to revenue, which we don't have, we made it an increase in expense. So it'll offset one way or the other.
Did we ever get a reduction in revenue?
Not yet.
Are we anticipating a reduction in revenue?
We are still anticipating that that one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars will be collected somehow by the state of Connecticut.
For this year?
For this year.
Okay. Thank you.
We have not heard differently.
Are there any other questions on these spreadsheets before we move on?
Page up to the motion?
Yes, please.
Can you page back up to the motions, please?
Hey, yeah, who would you?
Uh, motion that the budget as submitted by the town manager, March thirtieth, twenty eighteen, be hereby as amended as follow. Increase twenty thousand dollars to account four-one-two-oh-three, Building Department. Increase thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for account four-two-five-oh-one, Pilot Stained Own Property. Increase seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for account four-two-five-one-five, State Pilot Colleges and Hospitals. Increase nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, sixty-eight dollars to account four-three-oh-oh-one, Education Cost Sharing.
Do I have a second? Okay. So this motion is adding back revenue?
Adding revenue.
From the state?
Based upon the adopted state budget, uh, the second, third, the second, third and fourth lines are additional revenue as adopted by the state. The twenty thousand dollars to the Building Department fees were talked about last week as something we see as feasible.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, um, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next motion?
Motion that the budget as submitted by the town manager, March thirtieth, twenty eighteen, be inherited as amended as follows. Increase five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars to account one-one-oh, Town Council. Decrease four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, account one-twenty, Town Manager. Decrease two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, account one-forty, Data Services. Decrease three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, account one-fifty, Town Clerk. Decrease four thousand, nineteen dollars to account two-twenty, for Finance. Decrease one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars for account two-thirty, Tax Assessor. Increase seventy-two dollars, uh, to account two-forty for tax, uh, first one was Tax Assessor, this one was Tax Collector. Decrease one thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars for account three-hundred, Planning and Development. Decrease three thousand, eight hundred and one dollars to account four-ten, Building Inspections. Decrease twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars to account four-twenty, Police. Decrease nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars to account four-forty, Fire Marshal. Decrease ten thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars to account five-ten, Engineering. Increase ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars to account five-twenty, Physical Services. Decrease a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars to account six-twenty, Social and Youth Services. Decrease nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to account seven hundred, for Public Library. Decrease five thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars to account eight hundred, Parks and Recreation. Decrease six thousand dollars to account nine-forty, MDC slash Housing Authority Sewards. Decrease twenty-five thousand dollars to account nine-fifty, Transfers CIP slash CNEF. Decrease sixty thousand dollars to account nine-sixty, Reserves for Retirees. Increase three hundred thousand dollars to account four-one- Increase $300,000 to account 410, or 4110-54437 Street Construction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Hurley?
What's the physical services, 99,000?
That's the addition of the custodial supervisor position from the Board of Ed.
Any other questions? Counselor Ralph?
The 12,254 police reduction, which one is that?
It's all health insurance. Engineering looks high because 7,000 of the dollars of that is the line striping and the remainder is health insurance.
Counselor Hurley?
What's the 60,000 then for reserve for retirees?
25 from compensated absences, 25 from heart and hypertension to help offset the pension adjustment, and the other 10 is from the reimbursements that we just discussed.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-3. Next motion?
Motion that the budget as submitted by the town manager, March 30, 2018, be hereby as amended as follows to decrease the total appropriations for school purposes by $299,194.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Hurley?
So the reduction was 190,000, not really 300 because that, 100,000 of that was just the movement? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I know they gave us a list of $500,000 of reductions. And I thought we were talking 300, that you guys were talking 300, but I guess it was only 190.
When we went through it, we were looking at it and we figured the 109,000 for moving the position over to physical services and taking a look at the area of the 250 and cuts of the board presented to us, if we took 190,000, it would leave them some of that money in there to do some of the things because they were cut drastically last year. So this way, really, the cut to them is the Bushy position and the 190,000 out of the 250 that they requested.
But the Bushy position isn't a cut?
It, it's a transfer over, but it's a cut on their budget because the money was in their budget.
No, I get that.
So we had to move it over.
We're calling it a cut.
Well, reduction, I should say. That's part of the reduction in their budget is those benefits for that position as well as 190,000 additional.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Abstaining? Okay, motion passes 6-3. Next motion?
Motion that the total appropriations for school purposes be set at $58,728,469 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Abstentions? Motion passes 6-3. Next motion?
Motion that the Town Council adopt the budget as submitted by the Town Manager on March 30, 2018, and as amended by the Town Council in the sum of $43,644,034 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Overly anxious to second that one.
Thank you, Counselor Lesser. Do we have any?
Just kidding, just kidding.
Do we have any questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries 6-3.
Motion that the total appropriations for the Capital and Nonrecurring Road Fund be set at $1,800,000 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 9-0. Thank you.
Motion that the total appropriations for the library purposes be set at $2,9,135 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions on this motion? Counselor Ralph?
This is a question for Mike O'Neil. The library budget at 2.009, or $2,135, what does that represent as an increase in last year's budget for the library? Do you have that right in front of you?
I don't, but I can get it very quickly. He's Mike O'Neil, he can do anything.
Computer or the calculator on the iPhone.
I got a calculator. That's from the November.
Okay, adopted budget.
Adopted budget, that's right.
What is the total proposed increase that the items five and four combined as a total percentage above last year's as a percentage?
So schools and the town?
With or without the library?
With the library.
2.67.
2.67?
If you look at the, there's a few different figures with, you know, combinations of, on the, on the last expenditure page in the lower right-hand corner.
Page six of nine?
With road fund, without road fund, with, you know, town only, town and Board of Ed.
Oh, okay. Overall increase with road?
Yes.
2.67?
2.67.
Okay. Well, I must commend Brooke Barry and the Library Board for, again, coming in at the lowest of any increases, I think, of any department, if I'm not mistaken. They've done a pretty good job of holding the line as they always have, not going above what our town budget goes up.
Well, they pay no electricity, they pay no water, they pay no sewer, they don't pay for heat and natural gas, so we carry that on our side.
We do?
Yes.
Okay.
So I congratulate Brooke as well for getting someone else to pay her bills.
Wow.
And then are we, and we are also, will be footing the bill on their MDC increase as well? I would imagine that is part of our increase?
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the library? Motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 9-0. Thank you.
Motion that the total amount to be raised by taxes for the town library, school, and capital and nonrecurring roads funds purposes combined be set at $89,428,361 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions on this motion? Counselor Latina?
Mr. O'Neil, so this is combined a 2.67 percent increase?
In the levy? No, I'll give you that, hold on. 2.67 would be total expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Can I give you just the town levy? I don't have it combined. I can figure it out, but I don't know how patient everyone will be.
There's one more mil, correct?
Current year levy's 39,77. So it's slightly more than one mil.
So does the number that we talked about the other day still stand, nearly $400 more a year on the average household?
Okay, one question at a time.
Sorry.
Let me go back. No, it's okay. Just taking the, the general fund levy, the 88, going from 85.9 million in the current year up to 88.2 million is a 2.7 percent increase.
Okay.
And we were talking, I'm trying to remember, last Thursday, I gave you those figures, I think we were slightly, well, we were slightly higher than this, what you see here, so that percentage increase would come down from what we talked about last week. I don't have it in front of me.
Right, so, but roughly one mil would equate to, I think we said it was about nearly 400 per household, the average house?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Wasn't the average house 167?
It'd be $1 per thousand, so if your house is valued at $167,000 or $200,000, one mil would equal?
200,000.
And how many homes are worth that much in this town?
That's the average.
Whatever the average is.
The average, the average was 167, I think.
I don't know. You don't have to calculate it, it's a lot.
Go ahead.
Okay. So that's motion eight. We have a, a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, is there any, are there any other, is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries 6-3.
Motion that the general fund tax rate for all taxable properties be set at 40.25 mils for current, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on this motion? Counselor Hurley?
Another one for Michael. We're at 40.78 all-in mil rate. Does that put us in the top 10% of towns in our, in our state?
I don't know. I mean, it's.
It's one of the highest.
I mean, when you get over 40, it's, it's a small group. I don't know the, I don't know the exact figures on that.
Okay, but it's up there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Ralph?
What is our current mil rate for cars at in town?
39,77. It's mirrors the, that rate is 32, or whatever the state said at the end of last year. Next year it'll be parity, 40,78.
So.
39 is the current levy for cars this current year.
Current year, what we adopted in November is a mil rate of 39.
39.
For cars.
For cars.
Yes.
So we're going to see, or taxpayers or residents who have real value, real estate, as well as real property, I guess, real property and motor vehicles will see both increases in their vehicle tax bill and their real property tax bill.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a state law requiring any cap right now on the mil rate for vehicles?
45.
That was just adopted?
Yes.
Could towns go below their real property mil rate on vehicles still? Could we keep it at 39?
If you want to either find a way to reduce the difference from the budget or shift it to real estate.
Okay.
I've heard nothing this evening of any major reductions that would impact the budget.
So, yeah, there's no, I mean, if we're increasing on everything else, there's, doesn't look like there's any will to decrease anymore to keep motor vehicles at 39. Okay. Just, well, just a quick look of those towns that do have higher than 40 mil rate of 169 towns plus different districts. I can't come up with the quick number of how many, but I do look at some of them. Middletown, New Britain, Hartford, New Haven, Waterbury.
West Hartford.
Yep, West Hartford.
Glastonbury, I think.
Uh, Glastonbury's at, well, at least, I don't know if they've adopted a budget yet this year.
They did, they're in the high 30s.
Yeah, they're in the high 30s. Just, I think they're just a little higher than what we are currently before tonight's adoption. That does put us in a select class of municipalities above 40. And I think I made the comments last year when the first budget this town adopted over $100 million was a sizable increase and was taken aback by many taxpayers. We are now going above, not only staying above $100 million, but we are for the first time going over 40 mils, and it does put us in a select class. I know the, the cuts from the municipalities, or from the states municipalities had a adverse effect on a number of towns' budgets, but I think hearing from taxpayers at our public hearing on the proposed budget, it's unsustainable. I don't think we can keep going back to taxpayers year after year to, to ask them to pony up more on the local level as well, looking at the future, at what they are possibly going to do in the next two years on the state level. One thing in common, with the exception of possibly West Hartford, but looking at all these towns and then looking at the population statistics over the years from those towns that have 40 mil or higher, their population has decreased in pretty much every one of those municipalities that have adopted budgets over 40 mils in the last 10 years. I don't think we would want to see Leathersfield do that. I think going over 40 is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hurley, did you have something?
I did. We did have, you know, the town manager said there's no other proposals to cut, but we did talk about other cuts, another 300,000 or so from the Board of Ed and another 50 or so from the town side. So I just want to put that out there that there was discussions at least from three of us that we wanted to see more cuts.
Any other comments? Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like the, but the mil rate, as we sort of discussed before, and this is to Counselor Ralph's sort of discussion point, was the mil rate's set on the amount of money that we want to raise based on our grant list. So if we're in the non, if we've gone, we are, our mil rate could go down or will go down after we do a re, a reevaluation of our property rates. So that's sort of a misnomer to some extent because you could have a town that hadn't done a reevaluation of their property rates in four years and be on the end of that spectrum, which is exactly where we are because we'll be going in the next year, and have almost what you might call an artificially high mil rate because the mil is based on a lower grant list because we haven't done the reevaluation. Where on the other side of that, you could have a town that had recently gone through reevaluation, has an increased grant list because of it, and therefore their mil rate goes down. And I remember, I've been on this council or on a board in this town for over a decade now, and we have had high fluctuations in the mil rate where the mils can go down significantly just through a revaluation. I remember when it was going, when the property prices were going through the roof in 2006, 2007, we had a revaluation that year and our mil rate dropped significantly, like a tremendous amount, where you could go from 40 mils to 32 mils with a high, with a high rate. I'm not saying that's necessarily going to happen, although it certainly could, but it really is not fair to weigh yourself against a town depending on, when it comes to a mil rate, depending on when the reevaluation of the property, of the property was. So to, to use that sort of a comparison, because it appears to be what you're doing, I'm not saying that it's going to change the decision necessarily, but to be fair to the public, that the mil rate is merely a measure of how much to raise revenue against a grant list. That's all that that, that is. So if you have a low grant list, you can have a very, very high mil rate, so to speak. If you have a high grant list, you can have a very, very low mil rate. And that's, of course, why pushing redevelopment in order to increase the grant list in order to lower the mil rate is so very important. But that necess, to say, we happen to be in a year where our reevaluations are going to come in the next following years, and I would anticipate that even if you were to raise more revenue, our mil rate will go down because our grant list will be, will be higher just simply because of the increase in the value of property over time, you know, that trend, that just general trend line as it goes up. So I think it would be, I think it's more fair to look at and to make, if you were to normalize the data that you just went into and say, well, when was the most recent reevaluation of their grant list? And then normalize it for all of those revaluations. I'm not saying that's going to necessarily bring us near the bottom, of course, because we are a suburb of a major city, and that's what happens when you bring in various, various amounts of required. amounts of required infrastructure to those areas. But it is not necessarily accurate to simply say that, we, we happen to be in the, in the year just prior to the revaluation, and therefore there's pressure on the mil rate in order to go up. So I think that if we look at it more from a global standpoint about how we're looking at somewhere about two and a half percent, that that's extremely fiscally conservative, considering some of the needs that we have in this town. And so instead of harping, I think, on the mil rate, probably more accurate would be to understand how that we did the balance, this council looks like it's going to do the balance between understanding the taxes, the tax implications, and then understanding the needs of the, of the, of the community.
Thank you, Counselor Forrest.
Sure.
Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, I just don't underthink, I don't think Counselor Forrest understands that people have to pay a lot of money when it goes over forty point seven-eight, and I think it is a good measure, and if we looked at our house prices, they're actually, if you look year over year, they're actually going down, so I don't see this getting any better, so I think it's an incorrect assumption of what he's even saying. I think the mil rate is a good thing to look at because of the fluctuating revenues from the state, and it used to be okay just to look at how much your expenses were going up, because you could tell what your, you could actually get a good read because the state's revenues were coming in pretty level every year. Now you have to look at the mil rate, and I think people are going to not be happy with a forty point seven-eight.
And I think with the conversation we did have with Fawn, the, in the town assessor, was that her belief is that the revale will show an increase in commercial real estate, which will improve our grant list.
Whether or not, whether or not that will rear itself in a lower mil rate or in a less taxes being paid by the resident on real property, on their real property, is yet to be determined, though.
And we also did get figures from surrounding towns on percentage increases of their budgets, did we not?
We collected some.
And where do we fall at two point six-seven percent?
On the lower end of those increases.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Did, well, going off of that, did any of those include the City of Hartford?
I don't look at the City of Hartford.
Okay.
They're a ward of the state at this point.
That's probably a good idea.
What's the percentage of real estate to commercial? I mean, commercial to personal residential?
Twelve percent, commercial to residential?
I don't know.
Something like that, we'd have to check and get back to you.
So a majority of the folks who are paying the taxes, we rely heavily on residential?
Yes, we are a typical World War, post-World War II, first-tier suburb, bedroom community.
With the Silastine Highway and the Brolin Turnpike.
That was a choice that was made many, many years ago.
I know. I just, the one thing I will agree with, Matt, is that we definitely need to do a better job and try to get our redevelopment to, to increase. I think that we are lacking severely, and I think that's a challenge for us moving forward so that we can disperse the tax across the board and take on more commercial as opposed to residential, because we do have needs, a lot of them, and I think it's increasingly getting very pricey to live in Weathersfield.
I think we all wholeheartedly agree with you on the need for, you know, increased and continual economic development. Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion passes six-three.
Motion that the Capital and Non-Recurring Roads Fund tax rate for all taxable properties be set at zero point five-three mils for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-eighteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions on the road tax? Counselor Ralph?
This mil increase for the roads, I take it that's repaving for the most part?
It's the road paving fund which goes to resurface town roads.
And have they been set for this, well, this budget would affect this fall and next spring?
Yes.
And those have been set already?
We could probably look to expand the spring program.
With possible state funding or within our own budget?
Well, the, the road fund consists now, if you vote on this, of one point eight million dollars. Of that, a significant piece is state money, four hundred Town Aid Road and two hundred and thirteen, which is LoCIP money, so six hundred of the one point eight is state money. Now, LoCIP, we reserve and gather up several years' worth of project money to build, rebuild an entire street, so that money is not used annually, it's used maybe every third year.
And we're looking to use that in this budget cycle?
No, we're looking, probably need another year to gather up enough funds. The LoCIP project is Dick's Road, and LoCIP has been reduced in the nineteen budget by a hundred thousand dollars.
Our LoCIP funds have been reduced?
The state has reduced the LoCIP funding.
All right, but, and we are increasing ours from last year, what did we set for last year, one point five?
Now, of the one point five from last year, there was more LoCIP money. To get to one point five in the proposed budget, we replaced the LoCIP loss with local dollars to stay at one point five. This evening you've added an additional three hundred thousand dollars, so overall the town's commitment to roads is increasing over four hundred thousand dollars in the nineteen budget.
Where did we get the four, the one hundred thousand from?
We added it to the two point seven-five percent increase in spend in the mil rate.
Okay. And then the three hundred thousand, the additional three hundred thousand, where did we find that this year?
That was added this evening, and it was partially, I would imagine, with?
It was a hundred and, part of it was the hundred and ninety from the Board of Ed cuts and fifty thousand from the town cuts.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? I would like to say that the number one comment I receive from residents, or complaints I receive from residents via email, via phone, or when I'm out at an event, is the condition of our roads. Mr. Mazarella made mention that roads are something everybody in our town uses, and after discussion, we did decide that it was something that, it was a place where we felt like we were not adequately funding it, and this increase of three hundred thousand is, goes a small way to increasing that funding. It certainly, the roads can certainly use way more money than that, but we felt that this was a threshold that we could handle and that we felt town staff would be able to handle increasing in their spring program. So if there are no other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes nine-zero. Thank you. I believe that is the end of our budget motions, am I correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Manager, okay.
We have an adopted budget, congratulations.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the budget? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Thank you and have a good night.